Good afternoon. Welcome, everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear Bill Number 23-0470, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district variances, 704 North Gilmore Street. We will also hear Bill Number 23-0433, Plan Unit Development Amendment for North Charles Village. We will also hear Bill Number 23-0432, rezoning 3301 St. Paul Street and 3311 through 3327 St. Paul Street. We will also hear Bill Number 23-0468, off-street parking, affordable housing. And lastly, 24-0494, Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Overlay Zoning District Prohibited Uses. In attendance today, we have members of the committee, John Bullock of the Ninth District,
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mark Conway of the Fourth District, Ryan Dorsey of the Third District, Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District, Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District, and Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District. A full committee is here today. And any other committee, any other members that are not in the committee? Okay. Seeing none, Representatives of the Office of the President. Thank you. Preston Lewis of Legislative Affairs, and Representative of the Office of the Mayor, Tyler Chanelha of Government Relations. Let's begin with Bill Number 23-0470, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district variances, which is 704 North Gilmore Street, for the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit into four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district on the property known as 704 North Gilmore Street, Block 0098, Lot 016, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, guarantee, granting certain variances from certain bulk regulations, lot area size, and off-street parking requirements, and providing for a special effective date. And at this point, we will have sponsor comments. Councilman Bullock, you're on.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is a project that has gotten community support. I do want to note one piece, and I think folks will see this in terms of the amendments, that the community's desire as is mine is to have three units as opposed to four. So, other than that, I think we're good to go. So, thank you so much, and I appreciate your support and favorable opinion.
Thank you, and thank you for that clarification with the number of amendments. Agency reports. We'll start with City Solicitor.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Elena DePietro from the Baltimore City Law Department. The Law Department has approved this bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jason Redd, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Fire Department.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tyler Chanelha, the Fire Department is not able to be here, but the Fire Department stands behind their report and has no opposition to this bill.
Thank you. Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz, representing the Baltimore Development Corporation. BDC stands by its report. We have no objection to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. Parking Authority.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Christmas Age Parking Authority, Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report, which is requesting a favorable report. Thank you.
Thank you. Transportation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. James Turner, Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report and no objection to Council Bill 230470. Thank you.
Thank you. BMZA.
Tyler Chanelha, representing BMZA. They stand by the report, which is different to that of the Planning Commission.
And we'll end with the Planning Commission, and discussing your, the amendments as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Renata Suther, representing the Planning Department. Planning stands by its favorable report. We have two amendments that were listed. Would you like me to read those?
Yes.
Amendment Number One, on Page One, in Line Three, Strike Four and Substitute Three, and on that same page, in Lines Six and Seventeen, in each instance, Strike Four and Substitute Three, and on Page Two, in Line Four, Strike Four and Substitute Three, and on that same page, in Line Five, Strike 2,625 and Substitute 1,875, and on that same page and in that same line, Strike 1,708.50 and Substitute 1,710, and on that same page, in Line Six, Strike 34.91% and Substitute 8.8%. Amendment Number Two, strike the accompanying plat in its entirety and substitute with the attached. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions so far from the committee or comments? Okay, hearing none. We're checking for public testimony.
And we have no in-person testimony, so if you're online and wish to testify, please raise your hand, and we will unmute you. So, we're checking now for any online testimony for this bill. And seeing none, is there a motion to recommend the amendments favorable?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Bullock. Is there a second? Second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Okay. So...
Unless Councilman defers his amendments to planning.
Councilman Bullock, so did you defer your amendments to planning? Because I'm trying to decide if we need to vote on planning, planning amendment separate? Just checking to see if we need to do separate voting on the amendments, or did that one vote?
As long as, well, planning has sufficient.
Okay, that one vote for the amendment was good. Is there a recommendation to move the bill favorable as amended?
So moved.
So moved by Stokes?
Second.
Second by Conway. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover?
Yes.
Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
So, this bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear Bill Number 23-0433, Plan Unit Development Amendment for North Charles Village, for the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the North Charles Village Plan Unit Development. And we'll first hear from the sponsor, Councilmember Ramos.
This bill was also introduced on February 27, 2023. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, committee. Before you is a bill that amends the Charles Village Plan Unit Development to allow for the properties that are listed here on the bill, 3115 through 3119 and 3121 St. Paul Street. It is currently Zoned C1 with a planned unit development. There is opportunity for an ordinance to change the height to be more generous, and that is what this is proposing, from the allowed 68 feet in a C1 to 80 feet. So, the building will be seven stor, is proposed to be seven stories. The building is, if you're familiar with the 3100 block of St. Paul Street, it is the building where the Streets Market, Old Eddies was, and now it's a Street Market, Streets Market, and then the Bank of America Building, where Bank of America was. The developers have bought both and are planning on providing an expanded Streets Market. A market there is a high priority for the community. We've been used to having a market there for a long time, and will also provide for apartments going up. And so, it will be the grocery store, an expanded grocery store, other retail, as well as apartments. The development team came to us, or to me, I should say, gosh, almost eighteen, almost two years ago, and proposed, and then we had a public meeting, and they had proposed an eight-story building. It was a horrible design, and the community was very clear that it was horrible. And as my colleagues know, we do these, a lot of public meetings in my district, and so because the development team needed support from, you know, for an ordinance to make their concept work, I said, "Go back to the drawing board." And so, they worked with a core group of residents for over a year, basically, to get the design in a much better shape, as well as, instead of an eight-story building, the design would have a seven, would be seven stories plus setbacks on all sides, and I received a lot more favorable support for their design, and so went ahead and introduced the bill, which you have in front of you. You will note that there is an amendment to make sure that the, that the map that is provided in the bill, it does say 80 feet, and there's also a couple of amendments from the Planning Commission that I have added to, you know, the bill. So, we do have people here to testify, both pro and with some concerns, but I wanted to let the committee know that I, in addition to that first meeting that we had, we had another public meeting and got feedback as well. And so, I think that this, you know, again, the grocery store is a huge priority for the community, so we are trying to make this work, and I would request a favorable report with amendments from my colleagues. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Just for clarification, so Public Works has amendments as well? Or is it the same amendments?
I didn't see anything from DPW. It was just Planning Commission. If I misspoke, I'm sorry. I meant Planning Commission.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
That was cleared up. Any questions from the committee to the sponsor? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and start with the agency. City Solicitor.
Good afternoon. Elena DePietro for the City Solicitor's Office. The Law Department, upon reviewing the bill and the Planning Commission report, noted that the staff report did not appear to contain an analysis of the factors or findings that were necessary under Section 13203. So, the committee needs to be cognizant of establishing findings and facts that support the standards in the law.
Okay.
Provided that occurs, the Law Department can approve the bill.
Okay. We'll make sure Planning explains that when we get to them. Thank you. BMZA.
BMZA stands by their report.
Fire Department.
The Fire Department also stands by their report.
Housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Department of Housing and Community Development stands behind their favorable bill report.
Thank you. DPW.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Marsha Collins, representing the Department of Public Works. We stand by our report and support of the legislation and are cognizant of the amendments that the Planning Commission recommends.
Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
The Office of Equity and Civil Rights reviewed the bill through an equity lens and found no inequity in the intent and purpose of the bill. Accordingly, OECR recommends favorable consideration by the committee.
Thank you. Transportation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. James Turner, Department of Transportation. The department stands by our bill report and no objection.
Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz, representing the Baltimore Development Corporation. The BDC stands by its report, and the report is favorable.
And Parking Authority.
Good. Good afternoon. Nicole Caesar from the Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. And last, Planning Commission, and you have amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning stands by our favorable report. We do have some amendments, and I know there was a question. Would you like me to read the amendment first?
Yes.
Thank you. Amendment Number One, on Page One, in Line 14, strike the word S-O-U-N-T-H and substitute it with the proper spelling of south, S-O-U-T-H. Amendment Number Two, on Page Two, in Line 11, strike October 2023 and substitute December 2023, and strike the accompanying Sheet Three illustrative preliminary build-out plan dated October 2023 in its entirety and substitute with the attached Sheet Three illustrative preliminary build-out plan dated December 2023.
Thank you. Any questions about amendments or anything to the sponsor or agencies? Seeing none, let's now check with public testimony. Oh, that's right. The Law Department had mentioned about the finding of facts. Could you explain what she is talking about and...
Yeah. Thank you, Madam.
If you have those facts here, that would be helpful as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, this is in reference to 13403 Major Changes. The way that the zoning code, Article 32 zoning is written, anything that's not minor change is considered a major change. And in 13403 Major Changes, under a scope of section, this section applies to the following major changes. Number one, a 10% increase or 25% decrease of the approved number of dwelling units. Number two, a 10% increase or 25% decrease in the maximum building heights. This zoning bill was introduced to allow for an increase of building height above the 68 feet to 80 feet, which is why it fell under the major change rule.
Law Department, do you want to respond to that?
I guess, so you're saying that the major, the standards and the facts that are applied, that would be applied to the standards don't, are not applicable when it's a major change?
That's my understanding.
Okay. I'll go with that. I'm not gonna, I don't object.
You're not, you don't object?
No.
Okay. So, we got that squared away. Any questions? Added questions from the committee? Let's now do in-person testimony, which we have some for this bill. And I'll start with the people that have checked off to testify, and then go back if there was someone that forgot to check off. So, we'll start with John Murphy.
Good afternoon. Button on your right, sir.
Button on your right. Press that button on your right, so the red will show. There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have the honor of representing Mrs. San San Yu. And the special feature of her is that she owns the property at 101 East 32nd Street, which is right next to the project. She has what's called an end-of-group, which means that she has windows on one side that face west. Light floods in from the west in her windows. The short matter is, this building, the seven-story building, will be directly opposite her house and cast a shadow over her house and really take away the ambiance of her property. Right now, the property has a 20-foot setback, which is going to be destroyed, so it's no longer there. And most important, it's a two-story building, so there's no real effect on her house. To put a seven-story building directly opposite her house has a very serious effect. In addition to that, she's a cancer patient. She has only half a lung left. We've given you materials that say that her doctor recommends that she receive direct sunlight, which will be not possible with this structure. I do not believe that the bill is correct legally in relying upon the existing zoning. The planned unit development was approved under the old zoning, and it says specifically that it's subject to the old zoning, not the new zoning. That's a technicality that I don't expect this board to resolve, this committee. The court will have to determine that. The real problem here is, when you do a planned unit development, we're all familiar with the area as it existed before the planned unit development came along. When you do a planned unit development, there's a specific requirement written into the law six or seven times in the materials I've given you, that says there will be no adverse effect on adjoining properties. It says that explicitly. That's a standard you must, with all respect, follow.
You have to...
And you're not doing that here, if you approve this bill. Moreover, it says explicitly...
You have to wrap it up.
...the value of the property. There's no doubt in the world that this adjacent property, cutting off the end-of-group windows, will have an adverse effect on the value. So, Mrs. Yu will suffer a very severe effect on her property value.
Thank you. Is, I see it's San Yu and Raymond Yu are related. Can they come up now?
And Mrs. Yu, why don't...
I see that one person in the family has...
Why don't I introduce Mrs. Yu?
Wants to testify? Did you, you checked off?
She wants to testify. Mrs. Yu.
Mr. Murphy?
So, you don't want to testify? You want, okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Yu wants...
Mrs. Yu, okay. You can come up.
She wants to testify.
Okay.
She's the owner of the property.
So, we'll let her do her two minutes, and then you can come back for Raymond Yu's two minutes, and then we'll have to move on.
Why don't I let her go?
Yes.
And wrap it up with anything she forgets.
Please come up and say who you are and, at the microphone...
Right here.
Right there.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, dear counsel. My name is San San Yu. I live at 101 East 32nd Street for 16 years. I worked at Hopkins University for the scientific research for over 20 years. My very high 80 feet rise just front my lower building, the distance, only one car distance, which is only 15 feet. My window, I cannot open my window because we're hit by the car. My window sill hit by the car countless times. It's distorted. At this, at this severely situation, even the developer want to build the 90 or 80 feet, 90 feet, just on the severely, severely my dangerous corner, only on the whole house, developer know, only on the whole block, on the block, only my house in this situation, only 15. Today, I also take a picture. How dangerous, the car coming to my house, I already been picture in my cellphone, only this distance, just your hit, just this distance, already on my car. Dear counsel, you can look at how dangerous we, that's why my, I cannot open the window, cannot open the window, otherwise the window totally destroyed by the car. At this point, they still want to put their building location 20 feet towards my house. How I, how I, how I survive with this situation, already hit countless time. They even want to 20 feet towards my house.
Thank you.
No, I have more.
For your testimony, so we'll have your attorney, John Murphy, he's, can come back because your relative yielded his two minutes back to your attorney. Thank you for your testimony. We got your message.
Thank you, Mrs. Middleton. Appreciate your cooperation on this. I'd like you to just understand what we're dealing with here. It's a planned unit development. I used to go to a, my dentist had a rowhouse in Charles Village that was all torn down for the development that's taken place. The PUD was adopted in 1966 and allowed a wide variety of uses that would not be possible under conventional zoning. It's a specialized zoning district. It's a wonderful thing. We've had many successful planned unit developments, but the essential point of a planned unit development, and this has been the case from the beginning, is that it not have an adverse effect on the adjoining property. Mrs. Yu is right there next to this project. It will have an adverse effect on her, both emotionally, with the building basically towering over her two-story rowhouse, no light, and no value, the decrease in value. And just, just to be clear about this, the current zoning, even if you say the current zoning, and both the old zoning and the new zoning are the same, whether the physical characteristics of the planned unit development will not adversely affect... development will not adversely affect future development or the use, maintenance, or value of neighboring areas already developed.
You have about 20 seconds to wrap it up so we can move, move to other testimony.
That's the point. There is going to be an adverse effect on the use and value of Mrs. Yu's property. You really cannot approve it with this standard. You don't do this with the ordinary zoning, but with the planned unit development, it's a specialized requirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Anderson Ostra.
Thank you very much to everyone, and hello to Odette, who we've worked with. Good afternoon. Several of our neighbors are here this evening.
Bring that. Could you pull that down?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Better, thank you.
Several of my neighbors are here. We live near to this proposed building, okay? Very near. It will impact all of us. And we have brought today about 150 flyers with signatures for people who are strongly opposed to a seven-story building. The reason is, there are a couple of reasons. People see this block as sort of a transition between the taller buildings at 33, 33rd Street, and we consider that area kind of the downtown for Charles Village. And then as you move further south, this block becomes sort of a transition block between the taller buildings to the five-story, what we call the Chipotle Building, and then to these lower buildings with their small businesses that suit the character of the neighborhood, and then to the three-story typical brick row houses in Charles Village. So the neighbors have basically two objections. One is that this building does not fit our neighborhood. They have improved the design. One nice lady architect helped them with that, and I appreciate that, but it doesn't fit the neighborhood with the height and the, the character. I mean, it's, it's almost, pardon me, but it's like a middle finger sticking up in a, a low elevation block. And the second thing is that the development process has been very extremely flawed. I'm a landscape architect. I look at context, not just one building. I've spent 20 years working with the Army Corps of Engineers, so I'm not shy about working with huge projects. That's not a problem.
Time to wrap it up.
Okay. I feel that they have not been honest. When they published even a list of their meetings, what they didn't put in was the results of those meetings. Almost all of those meetings ended up with a very negative outcome among the attendees. And I think you can look at this, 150 flyers, and, you know, speaks for itself.
So these are, you said, you said there are 150 signatures?
Yes.
And, and you're submitting them now?
Yes.
Okay. We want to get those.
Thank you so much.
So we'll, the committee will take those 150 signatures? Could you pass that to committee members, please? And then now we'll have Caroline Hecker. Okay. Is that Tom Liebel? Liebel?
Okay, we did do our order very well.
Okay. You were all on the second page.
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Chairwoman Middleton and committee members, Doug Schmidt with Workshop Development. Sorry. I'm taller than Carol, sorry. So I will go through some of the history. Councilwoman Ramos hit some of it, but if you don't mind, I'll kind of run through some of it. So the development team is MCB Civic Group and Workshop Development. We're all local developers with an excellent track record improving Baltimore's neighborhoods, and a number of my colleagues are here today. From the beginning, we understood that Eddies was not only iconic, but also essential to the quality of life of everyone who lives, works, and studies in Charles Village. When Jerry Gordon said he was retiring and closing Eddies, we saw an opportunity to improve what is currently the most shabby block in Charles Village. We also understood the responsibility to create something that would provide substantial benefit to the city and the community for decades going forward. Our process began with the acquisition in 2021. It was actually three years ago. That seems like longer in some ways. And our first meetings were with the Charles Village Land Use Committee to discuss our eight-story plan, as a councilwoman mentioned. We then met with a group of neighbors to present our massing plans, and we had a second community meeting, which was highly contentious. After the meeting, we decided to start with a clean sheet. We hired a market consultant to revise our business plan to allow us to reduce the building mass, and we created a neighbor's charrette at Mosley Architects' office. We specifically invited the most vocal opponents to the project so they could directly work with the design team. We later had them back to critique the subsequent revisions to the building, which was now seven stories. In my two decades in development Baltimore, I've never seen neighbors invited to have a seat at the table during the design, but we did that. The result was a compromise that even our most committed critic agreed was greatly improved. The design was a meshing of many of the wishes, and one of the UDAP panelists commented that the building looked like it was designed by committee, and it was. More adjustments were made after, working with UDAP and the Planning Department, to arrive at a scale, design, and amenity package and public spaces that those that participated can all be proud of. Thank you to the neighbors, Charles Village Design Review Committee, Charles Village Civic Association, the Planning Department, and Councilwoman Ramos, and our development team for those three years of work. We had many meetings through that process. We had three special public meetings. We attended multiple Charles Village community meetings. We had four land use zooms and meetings, the charrette process, and numerous calls and emails with neighbors. Additionally, my partner, Chris Nfume, and I visited Mrs. Yu at her house to see, listen to, and understand the details of her fears about the projects. The goals of the project that we all recognize were, number one, bring a modern, enduring grocery store to Charles Village; two, construct a building that would fit into the fabric of St. Paul Street, continuing the development that has become the envy of neighborhood commercial districts in the city; three, expand the housing options for students at Johns Hopkins, the city and Charles Village's anchor institution; four, improve the streetscape, creating comfortable, walkable environment at the corner that is frankly an eyesore today; five, design a modern building that fits into the character of the traditional Charles Village architecture and residential and business uses; six, address the grade change to the site while providing the clearances to meet the current retail standards, including modern mechanical and life safety; and seven, do our part to improve the environment with the state-of-the-art stormwater system, green roof, gold-level building, and environmental remediation of the former dry cleaner.
Now, you had two other people from your team to speak.
I do, but as the, as the applicant, can I have a little more time? I'm almost, I'm almost done. Thank you. Meeting all these goals, though, required many compromises, and fitting them on a 19,000-square-foot lot required one additional floor more than the underlying zoning allows. As I mentioned, we worked directly with the folks that raised concerns, and those were, meetings were very productive. For all our meetings, we worked with the Charles Village Community Association to reach out to the people that they wanted us to reach to. We had 51 people attend a summer meeting in a building without air conditioning to provide criticism and support for the project. And overall, as Councilwoman mentioned, the majority of feedback we got was positive. When Chris Nfume and I went to Mrs. Yu's house, we went there because we took her concerns seriously. We understand that she's worried and fearful about the change, and we made changes. We pulled back the corner of the building next to her house based on her feedback. We sat in her dining room with the sun coming in from the south-facing windows, and yes, our building will cast a greater shadow than today, but the house will continue to be bright. There will be less direct sun in the summer.
Wrap up.
Yep, but it's the same as a six-story building or a seven-story building. So as a development professional, I'm used to hearing the fears of change, and in cases like this, we rely on an open process, constructive dialogue, and talented city, government, and private professionals. And in this case, those guidelines were followed.
Okay. Thank you. And you, there were two other people on your team. Excuse me, Mr. Murphy.
I just, I just want to ask some-
No, Mr. Murphy, this is not a trial. Please, have a seat.
Could I just say something?
No, you cannot, not at this time. Thank you. You've given your- Mr. Murphy, you've given your testimony. Please, I'm moving on to other testimony. Please have a seat. Please have a seat.
That I requested cross-examination.
No, please have a seat, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy, please have a seat so we can finish testimony. Okay. So we just got a message from the Law Department that we have to give cross-examination. So that's with the other person that was speaking? Okay, you have to, can you sit down and-
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Schmidt, you come back up. And Mr. Murphy, our Law Department says that we should allot your questions. So on that note, please, you can come back up. Mr. Murphy, you can come back up and come to the podium and say who you are to ask your question to Mr. Schmidt. And just as a note, the Law Department does have some questions too for the committee about these, about the finding of facts that we'll talk about later, but I did want the sponsor to know about this. So, Mr. Murphy, you're on with your questioning.
Just for the record, this is John C. Murphy. I'm the attorney for Mrs. San San Yu, who's the owner of the property at 101 East 32nd Street. I appreciate very much allowing me to cross-examine Mr. Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt, your building is going to be directly to the west of Mrs. Yu's property. Is that correct?
Yes.
And currently, there's a two-story building on this property. First floor is commercial. I think the second floor is offices. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And there's a setback. There's an alley, Hargrove Street, that runs between the building and Mrs. Yu's building. And there's a setback in addition. I measured it approximately 20 feet from the alley to the edge of the existing building. Is that correct?
That's correct for part of the-
You can come up closer to your answer.
So, so part of the property is set back because there's two separate buildings, and then the other building is right on the property line currently.
Now, your proposed building is how many stories?
It's seven stories.
And what height is it?
80 feet or less, based on the final design.
But you're asking for a maximum height of 80 feet?
Yes, sir. Correct.
And how many units?
I don't recall exactly. I think it's 130-
143.
143.
Did you analyze, under the existing zoning, as the PUD was developed, how many units you could have?
We looked at a number of different alternatives, and I don't recall the exact numbers that we looked at in our many iterations.
Did you do any analysis under the prior zoning before transform Baltimore of how many units you could have on this property?
No.
Now, your testimony was, was that there would be an effect in the afternoon of the sun coming into Mrs. Yu's property. Is that correct?
So we provided Mrs. Yu and Yu shade studies based on our design, showing the impact between the 68 feet that's currently, that's allowed in the C2 and the 80 feet that we propose with our footprint of our building.
Did you do any studies showing the difference between your proposed building and what the existing- sun is with the existing building?
No, we looked at 68, well, we looked at each, each iteration of the project. We did a different sun study, or shade study, so we did multiple studies. But the ones that, that I shared with you all were the ones for the pertinent versions, 68 versus 80.
So-
So, Mr. Murphy, I'm, you're going to give like one more minute or so with the questioning so we can move on with the other testimony that might be helpful with you as well. Go ahead, you have another minute.
I doubt if it's going to be helpful, Madam Chair.
Well, you have another minute so we can get moving with the other testimony. Proceed, thank you.
Thank you. But we do, we are in agreement, there will be an adverse effect in terms of the sunlight coming into the windows of Mrs. Yu's building. Do we not agree on that?
We don't agree on it being an adverse effect. There will be some additional shade, certainly, at 68 feet as well.
You consider the shade a positive effect?
Well, if, if you recall, when we were together at her house, we, you know, her living room gets no direct sunlight, but it wasn't dark. So there's still, with her southern exposure, plenty of direct sunlight. There are certain times of days there will be impacts, but I don't, I think it's unfair to exaggerate the impacts that the building will have.
But you do agree there'll be, there'll be less sunlight coming into the windows on her west side?
Yeah, there will be, there will be less direct sunlight-
Less direct.
Coming into some of the windows.
It'll be darker.
There'll be less direct sunlight in some of the windows.
So it'll be darker. Can't we agree on that?
However you interpret it, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on, any-
I'll try this again, Madam Chair.
We'll go ahead and move on to Mr., your, Mr. Newman?
Neiman.
Neiman.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Good afternoon. My name is Josh Neiman. I'm the Vice President of Multifamily Development at MCB Real Estate, and I'm here to offer my wholehearted support for this legislation. A good friend of mine often says that real estate development is a journey, real estate projects are a journey, and Doug has walked you through the timeline of that journey. I'd like to review some of the specific steps we've taken over the past nearly three years to address concerns raised by the community, including Mrs. Yu, as well as UDAP. I'm a strong believer that when developers truly embrace the administrative process, including listening to community input, as opposed to viewing it as necessary boxes to check, that the result is a better project. Will everybody be happy in the end? No, clearly not. But you can gain a consensus to create something that will have a meaningful impact on the city. This is what I personally did when I was the lead developer of the Village Lofts building that was referred to earlier as the Chipotle Building across the street, and I think it's what we've done here. We had originally proposed an eight-story building that would have stood at more than 90 feet. Many neighbors, as you heard, were concerned about that height enassing, and as a result, we have brought it down to seven stories or 78 feet. I want to stress here that 78 feet is a mere 10 feet higher than the underlying zoning. So whether, so shade would be cast on that house without the PUD amendment. We'll get to why the PUD amendment is necessary in a few moments. Our initial plan, again, addressing community concerns, had the outdoor amenities roof deck on the east side facing Calvert. There were specific neighbors on Calvert Street that spoke about the, how there were noise issues from the Village Lofts, their rooftop space. We moved that rooftop space to the St. Paul Street, the commercial side. Some of the neighbors were concerned about the height enassing on the northeast corner, specifically Ms. Yu. We made notches in the building to reduce the amount of shadows cast on it. We heard concerns about congestion on Hargrove Street, and as a result, we have widened that alley by five feet to allow easier passage, which will improve deliveries to the commercial spaces on St. Paul Street that typically now go on St. Paul Street. They can now deliver to the rear on Hargrove. We also have moved the dumpsters that sit outside the building to move them inside the building, which will reduce vermin and other pest joints. We worked to create a design to create a streetscape that creates a 24/7, wider on both ends, creating cafe tables. On the southern end, we have, we will be improving- We will be improving what is currently a community parklet, if you will. I... As long as I can remember, Eddy's, which Doug spoke about a little while ago as a staple in the neighborhood, as well as Councilwoman Ramos did. One of the most important changes we've made is not only retain a small community grocery store for the neighborhood, but to rebuild it into a modern and more functional store. Make no mistakes. Streets wants to be at this site. You'll see a letter of support from them in the package that Ms. Hecker gives you later. But they need the store rebuilt. The existing store's systems are worn out. The layout is inefficient. It's essentially functionally obsolete. Without the density afforded to this project by going 78 feet, the project will not progress and Streets will close. From the beginning, we have listened to all the feedback we've made and made significant changes to accommodate those concerns. The final building will be a great benefit, both to Charles Village and the city. I thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
Do I keep it under two minutes?
Pardon you... Exactly two minutes.
There you go.
All right. Um, yes, please.
Just very briefly, you do agree that it will be an adverse effect on Mrs. Yu?
No, I do not agree that it will be adverse. I believe that there will be shade cast on it. But there would be shade cast on it whether it was 68-foot by right or 78-foot by a PUD amendment. There will be shade.
But there will be an adverse effect.
That's your words. There will be shade cast on it, sir.
And you think shade is a positive effect, do you?
I didn't say it was positive or negative. I simply am stating a fact. There will be shade cast.
There will be shade.
There will be more shade cast on it by a building than there is today.
And so, her windows, which now have sunlight coming in as an end of group, which is unusual, will not... No longer have direct sunlight coming in from the west. Is that not right?
I think that the shade studies show that there will be times of day when there is lots of direct sunlight. And there are times of day when there will be less direct sunlight.
Direct sunlight from the west with a seven-story building?
You've seen the shade studies, sir, yes.
I didn't see any direct sunlight coming in. A seven-story building? I don't see how it's possible. It's right across the street.
I've...
But there will be times when there will be a shade.
There will be times when there will be a shade. Yes, sir.
In your view, that's positive.
Those are your putting words into my mouth, sir. I would appreciate it if you're not. I said there will be shade. That's your... You are interpreting something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both.
Hello. I'm Sandy Sparks. I chair the Charles Village Land Use Committee. And I also chair the North Charles Village PUD Design Review Committee. And the PUD... The North Charles Village PUD was created 25 years ago or in 1996. So, this... So, we've actually been through quite a few developments in the PUD. What you see today is the result of the good work of that PUD to have a high-quality design and functionality within the commercial district of Charles Village. The... For this project, we worked, I think it's almost three years, from the initial meetings with the North Charles Village Land Use Committee, which meets monthly when we have an agenda item, and proceeded to have public meetings of the... Initially, of the people that are... Which is our usual means of the people who are immediately around the development. And then, we kind of go from there. This... The initial meeting was... Well, not the very first meeting. But the second meeting was overwhelmed by... Which was intended for the near neighbors. Was overwhelmed by many people who were brought in from far and wide to oppose this. So, we have been dealing with some very strong opposition from a very few people. And that has persisted to this day. We have proceeded with involvement with the developer in the charrettes, which were very productive and included the negative people. Anyway, I would say that we... The Charles Village Civic Association strongly supports the development at this site. And I'm... I stand by all of the community involvement and input that we had throughout the two and a half years.
Thank you for your testimony. Tom Leibel?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Tom Leibel. I'm the managing principal of Mosley Architects, who is the designer for this project. A lot of what I was going to talk about has been covered already. But I do want to clarify a couple of things. First of all, we did have a robust community engagement process. And the design was improved through that process. We heard community feedback, modified our design to better respond to what the citizens of Charles Village were looking for. I'm not sure exactly why they keep talking about the 20-foot setback. If you look at the alleyway to the east of our project here, the Bank of America building sits tight to alleyway. We've actually suggested pulling the building additional five feet to the west to free... Open up the alleyway and create more space, which will also alleviate some of Mrs. Yu's concerns about traffic backing up in the alleyway and whatever's happening with the windows and cars hitting it. We're actually providing more space in the alleyway next to her house. We have done extensive shade and shadow studies. And one of the things, when you do these over time, you'll find out that no matter what the site is, sometimes during the year, middle of summer, you're going to get bright light throughout the year. In the winter time, it doesn't matter if you have one story, two stories, you know, six stories, you will have shadow cast by a building at any time after 1:00 or 2:00 in the afternoon. It's just a nature of nature. But we have done the studies. And by stepping back the buildings we have on that corner, we've actually created, in essence, the same amount of daylight being... Or shadow being cast, whether it's the current design right now at 78 feet with the step backs or 68 feet without the step backs, because we're holding it back that distance there. We've also been focusing a lot on the quality of public spaces, a pleasant pedestrian experience, which Charles Village has been very focal in wanting to see there. Working with Streets to come up with a design that will allow this great community market to continue. And last night, I'd also offer, as I conclude my remarks, is there are a number of criteria that are required under the zoning code. And we believe we have met those design criteria. With that, I will entertain any questions.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Caroline Hecker Rosenberg Martin Greenberg. On behalf of the applicant, I have some handouts that I'd like to pass out for everybody on the committee. All right, thank you, Madam Chairman. And I'd like to thank Councilwoman Ramos for her guidance and support in this process. We have been through several years' worth of discussions with the communities, with the city, about the design of the project, what it's going to look like. And Councilwoman Ramos has been instrumental in getting us through that process and helping us understand the issues that the community has faced. I want to start just by talking about the applicable law here because this... The City Council, under the current code, hasn't seen a lot of PUD amendments. We used to do them a lot under the old code. But the way the law has changed, there just haven't been as many under the current code. The 2017 Transform Baltimore Code provides that all the existing PUDs remain in effect. They're grandfathered in, they're as-is. But if you want to amend them, you're going to be subject to the new code. And the new code includes heightened requirements that the City Council has to find, particularly when an applicant is, as here, requesting additional... Some exception to the underlying zoning. So, in this case, we're requesting some additional height. And so, there are some additional factors that the council's required to consider and some additional findings that are required to be made. I know the Law Department commented on this with regard to the Planning Department's report. And in the handout that I just passed out, you'll see just behind the cover page is a six-page memo that goes through all of those findings that are required to be made. And I'll talk a little bit about them here. But I'm not going to read the entire six-page memo. The committee is certainly able to understand it. But I do want to highlight one particular thing that I've heard repeated over and over again, which is that there's going to be an adverse impact on, you know, one, two, a couple of property owners. And that that itself is a reason to deny the PUD amendment. That is simply not true. Under Section 13204 of the zoning code, the specific standard is that the... That it will not cause such an adverse impact on neighboring property so as to outweigh the benefits of the development. And here, we contend that the benefits of the development far outweigh any adverse impact, which, you know, we don't agree that there is an adverse impact. But to the extent that there is one, the potential public benefits of allowing this project to go forward so vastly outweigh them that the council should approve the PUD amendment. So, I'd like to talk briefly about the project. And I'll go through these exhibits that I've handed out. There's a lot of information in here. But as we've discussed, the proposed amendment will allow an additional building height on this one block of the PUD to go up to 80 feet in lieu of the 68 feet that would be permitted by right. It's one additional story. It'll allow a seven-story building to be constructed. This additional height is necessary for the project due to the specific requirements of the grocery store on the first floor, which is something that the community so very badly wants to preserve in the neighborhood. It requires a taller ceiling height. They have to have a 15-foot clearance on the first floor, which is going to boost the whole building up. In addition, because it's a student housing project, it has additional space needs that a normal multifamily building wouldn't have to provide study rooms, video conferencing rooms, gathering places, which take up space within the building and reduce the overall potential density. We've also made design changes, which you've heard some about already. And I'll show you some drawings that illustrate the changes that we've made to pull the building in. But when we do that, we have to go up a little bit higher to accommodate that reduced square footage. So, in consideration of all of the factors, we believe that the public benefits of this project so vastly outweigh any adverse impact that may exist. And at the end of the day, we are preserving the grocery store, which is huge. We are widening the alley in the rear of the property to improve the traffic circulation around the building. We're internalizing the trash collection. So, the dumpsters won't be out back. There won't be rats running around. It's going to be a much cleaner and more sanitary environment. We're removing street parking. We're adding bicycle parking. We're significantly improving the streetscape experience along St. Paul Street with pedestrian-scale amenities, outdoor seating areas. And we're improving the public plaza on the south side of the building. The project will, at the end of the day, also result in a net reduction in impervious surface on the site of 50%. So, it's going to be a lot more of pervious area. So, with that, the factors that the council's required to consider are the normal city... Council factors that you would consider for a conditional use bill, which are... There's four things that the council has to find, which are the establishment location, construction, maintenance, or operation of the conditional use would not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. Here, we believe that, you know, as I've said, the public interest is in preserving this grocery store in allowing all of these other improvements. The community does support it. And, you know, we think that the potential benefits vastly outweigh any adverse effect that might exist. The second thing you have to find is that the use would not be precluded by any other law, including an applicable urban renewal plan. That is the case here. This is not in an urban renewal area. The use is not precluded by any other law. The third thing is that the authorization would not be contrary to the public interest. We believe that the public interest is served by the approval that we are requesting here. The Charles Village Civic Association strongly supports the proposed PUD amendment, as Ms. Sparks just testified. There are letters of support in... At the last exhibit in the packet that I handled out from the Charles Village Civic Association, as well as from Streets Market, several neighbors. And I've also included in there the written testimony of Mr. Neiman and Mr. Schmidt that you heard from a moment ago. And then, the fourth thing is that the authorization would be in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning code. And here, this is clearly in harmony with the stated purpose of the code to preserve and enhance the value of structures, communities, and neighborhoods, and to preserve, protect, and promote the city's employment base. Now, as you know, there's a number of factors that the council's required to consider, including the nature of the proposed site, including its shape size and the proposed shape size and arrangement of structures. The second exhibit in the file, number two, is a series of images that show what's around the property. You'll see that there are buildings that scale from 12 feet to three and a half feet. That was the smallest one, but... Or three feet... Stories, excuse me. 12 stories to three and a half stories. Ours is right in the middle, immediately adjacent to the site. There's an eight-and-a-half-story building. There's a six-story building. So, the proposed seven-story building is squarely within that size range. There are images of the existing structures in that exhibit as well, as well as a rendering of how the proposed building will fit into the St. Paul Street corridor. And you can see that it fits in perfectly with what's in the surrounding vicinity. With regard to the resulting traffic patterns and the adequacy of the proposed off-street parking and loading, I would point you to Exhibit 3 in the file, which is a turning radius exhibit that shows the improvements that will be made by the widening of Hargrove Street in the rear of the property. The nature of the surrounding area and the extent to which the proposed use might impair its present or future development. Here, we think that the retention of the grocery store is critical to the neighborhood. It'll preserve value for the community. And the nature of the surrounding area, obviously, with its proximity to Johns Hopkins University, having additional student housing options is going to be better for everyone. The proximity of dwellings, churches, schools, and other places of public gathering is another factor the council's required to consider. We are, as I mentioned, significantly improving the public space around the building with the pedestrian-level improvements, the streetscape improvements on St. Paul Street, and the plaza that's south of the site. There are some renderings and a plan showing those streetscape improvements as Exhibit 4 in the file. Accessibility of the premises for emergency vehicles. Again, we're widening Hargrove Street. That's shown in... On the exhibit with the turning radiuses. The accessibility of light and air to the premises and to property in the vicinity is obviously a key issue here. And I've included as Exhibits 5 and 6 the two shade studies that we prepared. The first one showing the project, you know, generally... I'll move quickly, sorry. So, a lot of things to cover here. The second one is the one that we did specifically for Ms. Yu, so you can see the effect on her property specifically. The other factors, I'm going to jump through the rest of the factors. They relate generally to compatibility with the city's master plan. And for all the reasons that are articulated in the memo that I've handed out, we believe that this meets those standards. I do want to touch on one other thing, which is under the new code, in order to approve a increase in height or any change from the underlying zoning, there are specific things that the council must find. There's three things. One is that the use is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. The second is that the use furthers the proposed... The purpose of the proposed classification. And the third is that the PUD master plan ensures that there will be no discordance with existing uses. And again, we believe that this is consistent with everything in the existing development up and down St. Paul Street within the corridor, as shown by the documents included in the file here. Where we are approving an exception to the district regulations, there are another list of factors that the council's required to consider. But the most important one, and the one that the code says that the council must find and cannot approve a PUD amendment unless it finds, is that there is a public benefit. And so, I want to be clear that this council should find that there is a substantial public benefit to the city by the retention of the grocery store, by the widened alley to allow better traffic circulation. The internalization of the trash rooms to bring all of that interior to the property.
Thank you, Caroline. I gave you that extra time because I wanted to make sure for the committee that those findings of facts were in approval for the Law Department as well. So, thank you for your testimony and your exhibits. Were also helpful for the committee. And yes.
Just one other thing on the amendment. There is an amendment to replace the sheet of the PUD that Planning had recommended. That... The new sheet, the revised sheet, is Exhibit 1 in the file that I've handed out. So, that is the revised sheet that we're proposing be amended.
Thank you. And real quick, back to the Law Department. She did talk about the findings.
Yes, I... After I, you know, heard what Planning had to say, I didn't have the opportunity to really look into it at that moment. So, I... When I had the opportunity and discussed it with council for the applicant, I was in agreement, really, that this is a proceeding that requires findings of fact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there any other in-person testimony? Was there any other in-person testimony before we move to check online? You please come to the...
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Lisa Pupa. I live on the 3100 block of Guilford, which is two blocks east of the proposed site. I oppose the height change, and I'm also speaking for others on my block and some that live on East 31st. One of the opposition letters that was submitted said, "The proposed height in bulk will substantially worsen the character of this vibrant and charming neighborhood." Another wrote, "Although we support students in our neighborhood, we have serious issues regarding expansion and encroachment over existing buildings and resources." For example, we discussed the alley. Well, their changes are to the north half. The other half of the alley is very narrow and cannot be adjusted. So although that could be an improvement, the extra traffic is going to be difficult for pedestrians. Another person wrote, "I support a building using current zoning restrictions. It's disheartening to know that our council member cannot recognize the difference in kind between the east side of St. Paul and the west side of St. Paul." And I think that's where we get to be choosing what we see. My side of the neighborhood is low-two-story residential. The other side of St. Paul is five-story and higher. So you can look at a block a certain way and think, what's the big deal of an extra floor? But when I'm on my third floor, I will be able to see this new building two blocks away. I'm going to hear, probably, sound travels. There's a little market space two blocks the other way. When they play music, I can't work. It's too loud. So I know this will impact me. Anyway, and the second thing is, we're talking about the immediate neighbors. Well, who here wants a wall of apartments out their window? No one. And yes, the loud building will still be a wall of windows, but we just need to understand we're a city of many people, not just a developer, building a grocery store in a, not a food desert. We have plenty of snack food shops. We have a wonderful grocery store, a wonderful weekly market. I don't need streets. I don't know where we're getting that from.
Wrap up, wrap up.
So that's it.
Okay.
Just thank you for the listening.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we're checking online, and there's two hands raised, three hands raised. We'll start. Oh, I'm sorry. Before we get back, one more in-person.
I'm not on the list.
Yeah, okay. But go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Chris Mafume. I am founder of the Civic Group, one of the partners on the project, speaking up today in support of this. I would have dressed up for y'all if I knew I was going to be testifying, but I felt compelled to after hearing some of the feedback. We've worked with the community for over two years. We've been committed to that. We consider it extremely important. We've had over 12 public meetings. We did not always agree, but that is part of the public process, and we're absolutely fine with that. And we even sat in Mrs. Yu's living room several times, heard her concerns for hours at a time. And so we've tried to do that. I want to make that clear. Two, this is where commercial activity wants to be. This is the main street next to a major university that we're lucky to have. It's good that Johns Hopkins is located here. It's good that they're growing. They have an expanding student population. They need more housing. When you talk about the character of the neighborhood and whether or not this is aligned with that character, we have one 12-story building, one block, one block north, and then on the same block as us, right across the street, we have an eight-and-a-half-story building. So I'm not sure I quite understand the, it's out of character with the neighborhood, it's changing it. This is where the commercial activity wants to be. That has also been the breadbasket and what's kept this neighborhood thriving. The new commercial activity, the new activity has been very good to it. Three, the grocery store. Overwhelmingly, we heard the neighborhood in support of a new grocery store. I've actually never heard a neighborhood say they don't want a grocery store. One of the big things is making this financially feasible. In order to get the grocery store, they want the new residence, they want the new building, they need the new space. So this is actually in jeopardy. Nobody else would say that, but this is in jeopardy. If the building doesn't get built by a certain time, the grocery store may go away. Some people may not care, some people may. Lastly, when we talk about the greater good, I always look at these things in terms of what are our goals, right? This operates as a system. So when we say we want a grocery store, but we don't want something commercially feasible to, economically feasible to support it, that means that we don't really want a grocery store. When we say we want housing affordability in a city, but we don't want to build any housing, and we get upset every time somebody wants to build housing, that negatively affects affordability. So there are consequences to this. And lastly, tax revenue. The breadbasket of the city is property taxes. We can't build any new office. The only thing we can build is housing. So if you want more tax revenue for affordable housing, for community centers, et cetera, you have to build more housing. That's just a general comment, not even about this project specifically. I just want people to think about that as these projects come forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we'll go back to online, and we'll start with Bill Howard. Unmute yourself. Mr. Howard, are you there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
You have two minutes.
Yes. I'm a nearby, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You're on.
Okay. I strongly urge the committee to vote against this bill, or at least to table it. You've heard tons of questions raised today. I don't know when you've seen 150 signatures opposed to a particular building in a small neighborhood also. Remind that the zoning for this was only changed in 2017. This used to be R8. As far as I know, there was no notice of that zoning change to the adjoining neighborhood. They notified the people within the PUD. Well, that's mostly apartment dwellers and institutional landowners. This time also, no notice, no written notice to the adjoining neighborhood, which you're hearing from now. I think that the fact that there's 150 signatures against is very significant with no structure and a short amount of time. I would like to ask a question to DPW. There is a structured sewer overflow, number 157, which is basically directly underneath this site at the corner of Hargrove and 32nd Street. It has not been closed off yet, and it overflows when there's a significant amount of rain. How is 143 additional units putting their sewer down going to impact that structured sewer overflow? Would also like to pick up on Mr. Mafume's question about affordable housing. And that is a joke. There is no affordable housing whatsoever in this project. And to say that that isn't the reason to support this is an insult to the neighborhood. Why does DHCD support this when there is no affordable housing? This is going to be high-end housing for Hopkins students, and you heard that in the design. They have to supposedly put student amenities in there. Well, this isn't a dormitory. This is a commercial building. The question is about 10 feet. So, you know, I said, we should go back to 2017 when it was only approved for about 45 feet, but we're not going to fight that.
Time to wrap it up. Wrap it up.
Why do they need the additional 10 feet? Why can't it be under the existing zoning? So I recommend, please vote against, or at least table it till some of these questions can be answered, and we can look at all the new materials that have been submitted today. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next person, Corey Russell. Unmute yourself if you still would like to testify. Corey Russ...
Russell, and I, first of all, would like to come out in favor of this.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
You have two minutes. Yes.
Okay, great, yeah. So my name's Corey Russell. I have a master's in urban planning and then currently work for the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, but I'm just speaking for myself here. I think this is a great proposal. One, I mean, first of all, for the city of Baltimore, it's huge to have a grocery store get invested like this. It's going to have more foot traffic with the housing nearby. The higher density per square foot of the proposal also usually correlates with higher surrounding property values. So I think, you know, neighboring properties would benefit from this, not, it would be a detriment. And then, yeah, as mentioned before, like, city revenue would also increase with higher property values per square foot. With the, you know, affordability was just mentioned, housing is many times a supply issue. So when you create 143 more additional units of housing when there wasn't any housing there in the first place, then, you know, helps alleviate some of the market pressure and therefore allows students, in this case, which usually are a low-income housing bracket, to be able to move into a place like Charles Village, which is also a transit corridor north of Baltimore. So I think that's huge that you have this housing close to an area that doesn't necessarily need car ownership, and the surrounding land use is very similar with the other large apartment buildings. And then from the DNR perspective, too, I'm just speaking for myself, but the stormwater management, green roof, and net reduction, pervious surfaces are huge for Chesapeake Bay health. I specifically work on Outcome One of the DNR, which supports, which reduces algae blooms in the bay. And projects like these are great to see the private sector investing in really positive solutions when it comes to stormwater management and like pollinator happenment. Besides that, I'd also like to point out that it's nice to see diversity of testimonies here with, you know, the median age of Baltimore is 36. So I think it's important to consider, you know, I don't think we've had any students here testify today, and this is student housing, so I think it's sort of a clear gap that...
Time to wrap it up.
...won't be living in the project. But yeah, I'm in favor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, Katie Beninas. Bananas, are you there? Katie, you're up. You're being sent a text. Did you want to testify? Your hand is... We know you want to speak. There seems to be a problem. Can you unmute yourself? We're sending you a text. Is there a problem from your end? We're trying to allow you to connect. It must be a problem from your end. You're telling us to hang on, but we only can hang on for a few. Is this person new? They're not part of it, okay. You're the only one left with a hand raised, and you seem to be having difficulty. So at this point, if you want to... You might have to turn in your testimony written and email it to us because you're And the problem's not from this end. So we're not sure why it's not working. Everyone else is working. So Katie, at this point, turn in your testimony. You can turn in written testimony at this time. Staff will put in that email address. And checking to see one more time if there's anyone else. Because you're on here twice for once, so I don't know if that's part of the problem. Okay, that's not the problem. Okay, we're now going to move, we don't want to wait any longer. We're going to move on with the hearing, and before we do decide on our votes for the amendments, we did clear up the finding of facts. And so at this point, we're going to have the sponsor make some comments after hearing much of testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, committee members, for listening. I want to thank everybody who's here today and very much value everybody's thoughts on this. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. First is, one of the concerns had been that on that block, if we do this, that we'll do it to the rest of the block, but I had committed to the residents and I recommit that I am looking into historic designation for the rest of the block so that that would not be able to occur. So I have made the inquiry, and I'm waiting to hear back from the CHAP Commission, from historical and architectural preservation. Also, I'm not sure why Planning didn't get into the details of the findings of fact like they normally do, and that's just something that we have to deal with. I know that day that we had the Planning Commission hearing, we also had the harbor, so it was a long day for them that day. So, but I do appreciate that the finding of fact has been put before us, and I agree, just for the committee members, I agree with that. Also, on the DPW, on the sort of, the question about the stormwater and all of the other things that came up, you know, this is something that is part of the development planning, and so they have to, the developers have to, address those issues. So because of the robust process that the city goes through with development, they will obviously have to address that. You also heard that the alley will be set back even further, so the traffic will be better and hopefully, well, and shouldn't damage the property. On the issue of affordability that came up in testimony, we had a lot of discussion about this, and there will be not particularly set aside because this property is, this project isn't eligible for inclusionary because it's student housing, but it is something that was very important to me, and Hopkins is going to be providing a lot of subsidy for a lot of their students to be able to live in this particular property. So I wanted to address that as well. And colleagues, I would appreciate your favorable report on this. We have worked very hard, listened, and will continue to work through the process to make sure that this does benefit the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions to the sponsor from this committee? And hearing none?
I'm actually getting on the phones as she's able to talk, just the microphone, if that's okay. If you would allow the...
I had already said that the person can send us in writing. We have moved on, and now we're, the committee is ready to... Ms. Katie, you can send your testimony in writing. The committee does not have any more questions. And is there a motion to recommend the amendments favorable? So moved by Stokes, second by Ramos, and this is for the amendments. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes? And now, is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable as amended? So moved by Stokes, second by Ramos. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next scheduled council meeting. And now the committee will hear the next bill, which is Bill Number 230432, rezoning 3301 St. Paul Street and 3311 through 3327 St. Paul Street for the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as 3301, 3311, 3313, 3315, 3317, 3319, 3321, 3323, and 3327. St. Paul Street, Block 3871. St. Paul Street, Block 3871, lots 1, 3, 4, 5, 7, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, as outlined and read on the accompanying plat from the R8 zoning district to the C1 zoning district. And sponsor of this bill is Councilwoman Ramos, which was introduced on February 27, 2023. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, committee members. I do appreciate your patience with me on these two bills. This one should not last as long. This one is a rezoning of the block where the infamous Tambers Restaurant is. Many of you know it. I've seen some of you there. It is very popular. It is a legendary place. And the owners there have requested, they are in an R8 zoning. The rest of that side of St. Paul Street, this is the odd side, is also currently in an R8 zoning. It is not part of the PUD, so we are not talking about the PUD here. It is simply a rezoning from R8 to C1. So the Tambers wanted the C1, plus the owner of the Tambers owns all except for one property on that side of St. Paul Street and is interested in his vision around doing some retail on the bottom and apartments on the top with the existing buildings. He does not plan on demolishing them and building new. And so the, there is one amendment that would remove the property on the other side of the block from the Tambers, which was inadvertently added. That is a Johns Hopkins property that would not be rezoned. And so this is part of some of the work that we've been doing around, you know, the work in Charles Village. One of the things that would, that Tambers had asked for for this rezoning was also so that they could do outdoor dining. They do have tables, but they are not able to do service. So we did have a lot of meetings about this as well. You'll see letters of support in the file, and I request your favorable report with the one amendment to take out. And there's a couple of Planning Commission amendments as well that I'm agreeing with that we would do for this particular bill. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The committee will now hear from Agency Representative City Solicitor.
Good afternoon. Lena Dieter from the City Solicitor's office. The City Solicitor approves this bill for formally good sufficiency, provided appropriate findings and procedural requirements are met.
Thank you. Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright for DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Fire Department?
Fire Department stands behind their bill report.
Baltimore Development Corporation?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz representing the Baltimore Development Corporation. The BDC stands by its report. The report is favorable.
Thank you. The Parking Authority?
Good afternoon. Nicole Caesar from the Parking Authority. We stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Transportation?
Good afternoon. James Turner, Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report and no objection.
Thank you. BMZA?
BMZA stands by its bill report.
And Planning Commission?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Renata Sutherland representing Planning, and we stand behind our favorable report. Would you like me to read the amendments?
Yes.
Amendment number one. On page one, in line two, strike 3301 St. Paul Street and, and on the same page, in line three and line 15, in each instance, strike 3301, and on that same page, strike beginning with nine, in line four, down through and including line 10, or pardon me, and including 10, in line five, and substitute and nine on that same page, in line 16, strike nine and 10, and substitute and nine. Amendment number two, strike the accompanying plat in its entirety and substitute with the attached. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the committee? We'll now take public testimony. Any in person for this bill? Is this? Alberry? And then Sandy Sparks?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm here on behalf of the owner of the Tambers Restaurant and the remainder, most of the buildings on the block, as Councilwoman Ramos mentioned. Going back to the original Charles Village master plan back in 1995 or 96, this block was anticipated to be an extension of the commercial corridor, which became the village center for Charles Village, later incorporated into the PUD that was just discussed. The owner wishes to have a combination of retail uses, small retail uses, obviously local, in the first floor of these buildings and apartments above. We, as part of Transform Baltimore for eight years, the Planning Department recommended this block be zoned C1, and it was just at the last council meeting where Transform was adopted that it became back to R8, which it had been. This would clear up the non-conforming use of Tambers, which is a very famous restaurant, allow outdoor seating, and also the revitalization of that entire block. We have no objection to Hopkins' request to take out the corner building. They don't need to see one zoning. It's consistent with the zoning they have, and we recommend approval by the committee.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Sparks?
Sandy Sparks, Chair of the Charles Village Land Use Committee and also Chair of the North Charles Village PUD Design Review Committee. This has been long in coming that it should be C1. Anyway, if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, whatever. Anyway, so this, this is what we, what we want to see here. It's a very successful restaurant at the corner, and there's no reason for the fact that the rest of those two-story buildings couldn't be developed with small little businesses all like 36th Street and Hampden. That's what we envision. So we're very enthusiastic about, about this happening and have strong support.
Thank you for your testimony. And that's all for in-person. Now we're checking online. If you wish to testify on this bill, use your raise hand button, and we will unmute you. And we have no testimony on this bill. Is there a motion to recommend the amendments favorable? So moved by Stokes. Sarah, second?
Second.
Second by Bullock. Chair Middleton, is a yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Is a yes. Conway?
Yes.
Yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover is, has stepped away. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. So the amendments pass. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable as amended? So moved by Stokes, second by Ramos. And Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Is a yes. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. And this bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear Bill number 23-0468. Off-street parking, affordable housing for the purpose of eliminating off-street parking requirements for a residential project is the subject to inclusionary housing requirements. Sponsor, Councilmember Dorsey. And this bill was introduced on February 27, 2023. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the committee. What do I want to say about this bill? This bill is common sense at this point. The rest of the country is realizing that minimum parking requirements are bad public policy. Before, or as we were beginning the other bill hearings today, my staff passed out to all the members, everybody here, a list of just some of the jurisdictions across the country that have just in the last few years completely done away with parking minimum requirements across all uses, residential uses, commercial uses in many cases. And what we're asking with this bill is to do away with parking minimum requirements for just one subset of use. And that is a particular subset that we, the taxpayers of Baltimore City, then have to subsidize. The, the point here is that there can be cases where a development, because of our local parking minimum requirements today, might be forced to build more parking than will ever be used at that site, and for arbitrary, non-scientific reasons. And if you've never read the 700-plus-page book, The High Cost of Free Parking, you're in the majority. But if you ever want to delve into it, it makes real clear how arbitrary and nonsensical and bad for the public parking minimum requirements are in general. In this specific case, what we're talking about is those projects which are subject to the recently, the provisions of the recently passed Inclusionary Housing Law, where we, the public, will have to subsidize these inclusionary units by, by making up the rent gap. So if what it costs to make, you know, if you're building, if you're building a new apartment building where units are going for $2,000 a month and 50% AMI for certain household size is only $1,000 a month, then we, the taxpayers, have to pay that $1,000 difference per unit per month. And if you're talking about a building of 40 units, then we've got to do that with four units in that building. And I think that a building with 40 units is a really simple, good way to make a point about this. So in a building with 40 units, we've got to set aside four as inclusionary units. The law today says that you have to build one parking space per one dwelling unit for the other 36, the market rate units. But for the affordable units, you only have to do one to two. So instead of building 40 parking spaces for 40 units, you've got to build 38, one for each of the 36, and one for every two of the affordable units. But what if that development and the developer assess the market and they say, this development, we think, has a market that's only going to really require us to utilize, say, 25 parking spaces? Now, this is what the rest of the country is deeming completely reasonable. This is what the rest of the country has determined is a smart thing to do, to let the market demand determine for the developer how many parking spaces need to be there. And so if a developer says, you know, this development is only going to really necessitate or warrant 25 parking spaces, the law today, by making them build 38 parking spaces instead of just those 25, means that they've got to build 13 parking spaces that are not going to be utilized or are going to be underutilized. Those 13 parking spaces are going to come at a cost probably of about $35,000 each to construct. And so that adds about $455,000 to the total cost of that development. And that $455,000 gets rolled into the rent of every tenant in that building. And that means that there's going to be a higher rent on the inclusionary units than there would be otherwise. And that means that we are going to have to subsidize a greater rent gap on those units. I'm asking the committee here to think about this reasonably and in a fiscally responsible way and say, there's no world in which we should be willfully driving up the cost of developments that we then have to subsidize. And I'm asking the committee to recognize that the whole rest of the country is coming to reckon with the fact that parking minimums in general are bad public policy. One final thought on this also is that we've just heard two bills related to Charles Village. One for a PUD in a C1 district, and one to upzone a property from a residential zone district to a C1 district. Both of those properties can develop all the housing that the law will allow, and not a single parking space is required in any of them. C1, as well as C5 downtown, are already exempt from off-street parking requirements. So the big impact of this bill is just to see two properties in the city. Why should they? Because others like C3 and C4 are very, very unlikely to see the kind of development on them that, that, that this, that, that would necessitate the inclusionary housing requirements. And so why are we making a donut hole for certain types of properties to be economically disadvantaged in their ability to develop housing that we desperately need in this city when certain others are already exempted from it? Thank you.
Thank you. Did we have this discussion during the inclusionary housing? I think we...
This came up...
And that's okay.
Over and over again.
Just to refresh the committee's memory back when we were working with the Inclusionary Housing Bill, and I think a separate bill had to come up, and this was one.
The point, the point came up that because the Inclusionary Housing Law was not itself a zoning bill, that zoning-related content could not be amended into it and required a separate zoning bill.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, yes?
Thank you. Also, there was a very big discussion about this during, and I'm glad you brought that up. One of the, our inclusionary bill is pretty different than what we see across the country, where they do use parking minimums and height variances in order to try to fill the gap. The way that we did it was we went with the long-term cost, which is why we have the tax credit to do the difference between the market rate rent and the affordable rent. So that was why we took the parking off the table at the time. The councilman is right that there would have, had to be a separate bill anyway if we were going to do a parking. And in this particular case, what this would do is to make sure that the subsidy that the city would have to come up with is, I guess, less, really, because they're not paying for parking spaces. And as the, well, I probably shouldn't be doing this, but I think that the, you know, just to clarify what that would, how this fits in with the inclusionary bill. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that was important, just to refresh the committee's memory. We'll now hear from Agency Representatives.
Madam Chair, I'll open this up first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
On behalf of the administration, I'm sorry. Tyler Schnella, Mayor's Office of Government Relations, here on behalf of the administration. And on behalf of the administration, want to extend my appreciation to Councilman Dorsey for introducing this legislation. The primary goal of the bill is clear, to increase the availability of affordable housing options, an objective that is shared by the administration. Essentially, what the bill would do is eliminate the off-street parking requirement for residential development subject to the city's inclusionary housing requirement, and by doing so, aims to make these projects more attractive to developers, so that way we can start to create those additional affordable units that we so desperately need. However, the Parking Authority does have some concerns that warrant further exploration. And either that discussion will happen here in committee, or we'll have to continue to have those discussions around what needs to be done to ensure that the Parking Authority is comfortable with moving forward with the bill. You'll also hear that DOT... You'll also hear that DOT is open to discussing the review and how the legislation may impact the agency's traffic mitigation fee and other DOT programs, but we've already scheduled an internal meeting to discuss that. And following that internal meeting, we'll meet with the sponsor, too, Lou Piment as well. But they are not opposed to the bill, and I want to be clear about that. And Health Department, though not formally referred the bill, initially their report wasn't going to be submitted, but it looked like the council's executive secretary did put the report on the record. But they are also in support of this legislation as well. But, you know, and just given the considerations and what you will hear from our agencies, I want to just reaffirm that the administration is wholeheartedly committed to supporting endeavors aimed at augmenting our affordable housing stock in the city. But there's more work to do here, right? And the administration is committed to working with the sponsor to do that work. And, you know, I get that there are other cities around the country that are getting rid of the parking minimums and, you know, but we have to do it right here in Baltimore City. So, thank you.
Point well taken. Thank you for clarification of both amendments, which are different. And we'll go ahead and move to the city solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michelle Toth, on behalf of the city solicitor. The Law Department approves the bill for form of legal sufficiency, but has a clarifying Affordable housing is, comes under Article 13, subtitle 2A, and inclusionary housing comes under subtitle 2B. So, right now, as the bill is drafted, it's an exemption to parking, but it falls under the heading of reductions of affordable housing. So our recommended amendment would create Section G, which would be entitled residential projects subject to inclusionary housing. And then it would have the same provision, off-street parking is not required for a residential project that is subject to the inclusionary requirements under 2B-21 of Article 13 of this code. The next section would then be H, entitled reductions of affordable housing, and that would remain the same. I would take out that, that new provision from H and put it into its own section in G. And then the, the next provisions down, reductions, small dwellings would be I, and reductions, housing for elderly, elderly would be J. If you look at the structure of 16601, B through F are exemptions from parking requirements, and then the rest of the, the code is reductions. So if you're intending to put this in as an exemption, it should be clear to the public so that they will be able to find this, this.
Thank you for that clarification. Transportation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is James Turner, representing the Department of Transportation. Our bill report is a no objection to the advancement of this bill. I would like to mention that should this legislation be adopted, like Tyler mentioned, we might need to further review our traffic mitigation fee structure to ensure the impacts to city right of way are adequately addressed. If you think about traffic mitigation fees, you have a large building that, a large building that will not require off-street parking anymore, may choose not to do off-street parking. That would increase usage in the roadway, like the number of cars parked in the parking lane, drop-off deliveries, Ubers, Lifts, or other impediments to traffic flow. So we want to make sure that the fees, the current fees are properly, properly reflect that, that new area, sorry, that the fees will properly affect, or that the fees will be correct, I guess, and making sure that they're assessed, that there is no off-street parking in the area so we can account for those additional cars in the roadway. Additionally, we want to make sure that these, that these developers who do not choose to have off-street parking are still making sure that their facilities are accessible and follow all ADA standards and city and federal law. Thank you.
Thank you for your no objection and your clarifications. And Councilman Conway.
I just want to clarify that I understand correctly what you're saying. Are you saying that we might, we might expect that fees would naturally go up as competition increases for street parking? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes. There could be, there could be some, and Parking Authority may get into that more with their bill report, but there could be additional studies that need to be determined if a development chooses not to have off-street parking. Removing the minimum requirement, let's say, is a fully affordable development with 20 units. Those 20 units could have 80 people living in it, it could have 60 people. Those people will still need to get around. They might use alternative modes of transportation, like walking, cycling, transit, carpooling, but some of them will still have cars. They will still need to be parked somewhere that would end up on the street. They could also, they could also Uber or do alternative modes, which would increase traffic in that area. So we want to make sure that our studies and our fees are adequate in the amount of work that we would have to put in in fixing traffic conditions.
Okay. And the other question I had in light of that is parking enforcement. Do you anticipate we would need additional parking enforcement? As, as someone who's been guilty of this myself, folks just park real quickly to go run and do something and come back, do we anticipate that potentially being another consideration?
I think we always need more parking enforcement in Baltimore City. Currently, we do need more TOs staffed. We would assume that if more developments, we, obviously, we don't know because we don't know how developments will look at this bill and choose to or not to have off-street parking. So we want to make sure that, we want to make sure that there is proper enforcement. I would assume that we would see a lot of double parking and things like that, but in order to catch that within the moment, it would have to actually be an officer in the area. So if we see, if we see developments like this happen in more enforced areas, like Charles Village, we might see more enforcement in that moment. But we would, if we would, if there was, if there was certain, if your office were to flag this area as need for more enforcement, we would be able to create a plan to make sure that traffic enforcement is happening in front of whatever developments don't have parking.
Got it. And then last quick question tied to the first. Do we have any sense at all what we might expect by a way of increase in parking fees in order to park on the street? Is that something we thought about at all?
We haven't talked about that, but we are going to have further discussions with the Mayor's Office and Parking Authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. The Department of Finance stands behind the bill response that we submitted. We defer to the Parking Authority on their position regarding the bill.
Thank you. And next, the Parking Authority.
Good evening. Fran Bernitzki with the Baltimore City Parking Authority, Madam Chairman, committee members. The Parking Authority is in support generally, but we would like to see two amendments in it. And if you would like, I can read them into the record.
Please do.
On page two, on line 13, we would like the word "not removed." And on this, on the 13th line, Second Amendment, we would like add a minimum of one parking space per four affordable dwelling units added. We think it's important that we continue to review our parking standards in the city of Baltimore, and if there is a call for less parking, that we would respond to that, both individually, when we're reviewing cases, and through the code, that there be changes to the code. So that was the intent. In our memo, we outlined concerns about getting rid of the parking in these cases, especially for people with disabilities, limited mobility, that it might cause more restrictions on some of the neighborhoods that don't currently have as many restrictions or any restrictions, that some developments wouldn't be able to participate in existing residential parking permit areas. Currently, the law is, if there are five or more dwelling units, they can't participate in the residential parking permit area that's existing. So we would want to leave them kind of high and dry without any parking. And it could additionally create pressure on the city to have to build other off-street parking facilities. So that kind of sums it up. We are agreeable with working with the sponsor on revised language.
Thank you. Point of your amendments well taken. Housing? Oh, hold, hold up, housing. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I've spoken with Planning, with Parking Authority staff, and it has been challenging, to say the least. It doesn't seem like there's any middle ground here. I will say that I regard these amendments as entirely unfriendly and seeking to undermine the entire intent of the bill. If I could go back to the example that I used in my opening remarks of a development with 40 units, and where today, because of the one-to-one on the 36 market rate units and the one-to-two on the four inclusionary units, again, a 40-unit development is required to build 38 parking spaces. Again, if the developer says the market here only warrants 25, what business do we have making them build those 13 extra parking spaces? What the Parking Authority's amendment would do is have the effect of reducing from 38 to 37, so that we would still be forcing 12, not 13, extra spaces on the development by maintaining the 36 one-to-one and simply changing the affordable or inclusionary units from one to two to one to four. We reduce the demand, or the, the minimum mandate by only one parking space. That completely undermines the intent of this bill and guts its purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to housing.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
And BMZA?
BMZA stands by our bill report.
Planning Commission?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Planning respectfully stands behind its favorable report. Thank you.
And Health Department?
The Health Department was not formally referred this bill, but they offered comments. They submitted a favorable report as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the committee? We'll now check for in-person testimony, and we'll start with Josh, is that Mannan? Hi. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Josh Nieman. I'm still with MCB Real Estate, but I am also wearing another hat here, which is a member, active member of the Baltimore Development Work Group Steering Committee. I want to drill into a little bit of what Councilman Dorsey was talking about and shed some light into calculations that developers have to make. It is not as though no parking is going to be built. Parking is, is a market-driven calculation. It's, you know, where, where you are building something, what the neighborhood is like. There is an advantage of having parking. If there are two apartments next door to each other, one has it, one doesn't, you are an advantage if you have that parking. It's also dictated by what our lenders want. But it is also a huge burden on a project. The one-to-one parking ratio throughout the city, except in that C-1 and C-5 district. I want to correct something the councilman said. The cost isn't 35 grand a space, that's sort of a midpoint. It really can range from 25 grand to 60 grand. So let's amp it up. Instead of a 40-unit building, you're at a 200-unit building. So you're talking between 5 and 12 million dollars. What we find is, a lot of times, that parking doesn't get used, but the investors still need to be paid, the bank still needs to be paid, and so that gets baked into the rents and it gets baked into the inclusionary rents. Where I see this coming in great, greatly is in parking variances. And there's a project that we've been looking at in Councilman Conway's district on York Road, just south of Senator, where to build it, and it is affordable, we needed a parking variance. And having this latitude and flexibility would be extremely important. So I endorse the, the bill, and thank you for introducing it.
Doug Schmidt? I'm sorry.
You can call me Doug. Thank you. I'm chairwoman, committee members. I am also, still with Workshop Development, and I also am with Baltimore Developers Work Group. So I do want to amplify a little bit what Mr. Nieman said, because not only is the affordability an issue related to the inclusionary bill, it really relates to an entire project, and it relates to areas where we can develop. One of the challenges in the city is that with the cost of construction and rents that we, we can afford to offer to folks, there are many areas of the city that we just can't build. The economics don't work. So I'm not saying that this change fundamentally changes the economics, but it certainly moves the needle. When we build parking spaces and we charge for them, that cost does not cover the cost of operating and building. So every parking space really is a burden to a project. So I've said this many times, you may have heard me say this, that the worst thing a developer can do is not build enough spaces, and the second worst thing they can do is build too many spaces. So we work very hard to find that sweet spot. If we can be more competitive with our rents, then we can attract more folks and we can build in areas that we otherwise couldn't. So everything that we do to make housing less expensive to build in a smart way is a positive thing for the city, and I think this bill is a positive contribution. So we're supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to take one line testimony. Raise your hand if you wish to testify, and we have Corey Russell.
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so thanks again. My name is Corey Russell again. I work for the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, but this is just a testimony on my behalf. I also live in Canton, Baltimore, and it's just crazy to me to, as a resident, to see how much space in the city is devoted to parking, whether that be the Safeway or the waterfront on the, you know, southeast part of Baltimore. It's, the land value is one of the most expensive in the city, and we're putting parking space on it because it's mandated to buy the city to have parking. It also makes sense to me that the Department of Parking wants more parking. That feels like a no-brainer thing for that department to want, but we also don't have, like, representation. There is no Department of, like, cycling or other forms of transit that, you know, are represented here. So let's consider that. And finally, from a perspective of, like, a natural resource planner, focused on Chesapeake Bay Health, there's tons of impervious services that parking creates, obviously, and that really negatively impacts runoff going into the Chesapeake Bay, whether that be stormwater systems that also have to deal with sewage overflowing, or even just like plastic pollution, which isn't captured by park mods. So yeah, I'm in favor of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Jed Weeks?
Jed Weeks here with Bike More. We submitted written testimony in favor of this legislation without the amendments. But I did just want to give a little personal story here. As a Remington resident and constituent of Councilman Stokes, he's got the wonderful Remington Row project in his neighborhood. That is a building that's very popular, won a lot of awards, has 20% inclusionary units in it before the inclusionary bill, so it's just a great success story for the most part. It's got 30,000 square feet of Hopkins Clinic in it, it's got 15,000 square feet of retail, it's got 108 apartments. On average, at night, because I live across the street, and I've just been doing counting for my job, late at night, there are 113 empty parking spaces in that building every single night. That translates to almost $7 million of wasted space. That's $7 million that could have been a green roof on that property, that's $7 million that could have been, you know, more affordable housing in that property, it's $7 million that we could have used to subsidize the rents for the local businesses that are in there further. So, it's just, it's just a tremendous waste of space. It's a waste of concrete. It's just bad for the environment. And so, I just hope, you know, you all consider that. I know the Planning Department has been looking at structured parking all over the city, and they're seeing this routinely in the projects, and so I just hope you consider that while you're about each other. Thank you.
Thank you. And there seems to be no more hands raised, and I just want to mention again, Ms. Katie, I understand your frustration. We gave you time to try to see if you could get on, but I said again, please, if you want to test, if you have some testimony, you can submit it in writing. Doesn't have to be this very minute. Please submit your writing when you can to this committee, and we'll add it to the bill file. Yes, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was the Bike More testimony in the bill packet. There is also testimony from one or two others in the packet. There was an email that came in a little bit late while we were in the other bill hearings here today from Dan McCarthy at the Executive Director of Episcopal Housing. It's very brief. If I could read it into the record, I think it would be helpful. He says, "Dear Madam Vice President and Committee Members, I am writing in favor of Baltimore City Council Bill 230468, Off-Street Parking, Affordable Housing. As Executive Director of the Episcopal Housing Corporation, I have worked to develop affordable housing in Baltimore for the past 30 years. From my experience, parking regulations are one of the elements that has prevented our production of housing in Baltimore over the years. We have found that many of our residents use public transportation to access school, work, and shopping, and that the requirement of additional parking spaces at our project hampers our ability to provide the much-needed housing that so many Baltimore residents need. We ask the Economic and Community Development Committee to approve Baltimore City Council Bill 230468, Off-Street Parking, Affordable Housing, and send it to the full council approval and with the mayor's signature adoption. Sincerely, Dan McCarthy, Executive Director."
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
A quick recess for two minutes before we vote on the Law Department's amendment, Parking Authority amendment, and then the bill. There we go. We're back on out of recess. We're, Parking Authority is withdrawing their amendment, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And an update for the Law Department amendment, we're going to vote on it, but they're going to just rewrite it and get it nice and fine-tuned the way it should be, and positioning, and they'll have that copy for us by the next council meeting. So, we're going to go ahead and vote on it. Is there a motion to recommend the amendment favorable for the Law Department? So, before we do that, we'll just make sure the, let the Law Department clarify that for us verbally.
Okay. So, the amendments should read, Section G now states, "Off-street residential projects subject to inclusionary housing," and then the text should read, "Off-street parking is not required for a residential project that is subject to the inclusionary requirements under Section 2B-21 Inclusionary Requirements of Article 13 of this Code." Then H would be reductions, "Affordable Housing," and there would be, under that Section 1, no more than one parking space need be provided for every two dwelling units in dwellings that are erected or rehabilitated, subject to the restriction that the units be leased to residents with incomes at or below 60% of the area median income, with the restriction being for a term of not less than 15 years from the date of the issuance of a use permit and recorded in the land records of Baltimore City." And then number two under H would be, "The Housing Commissioner must verify by letter to the Planning Director and the Zoning Administrator the recordation term and tenor of the restriction." The next section would now become I instead of H, and it's "Reductions for Small Dwellings." And then the final section for "Reductions Housing for the Elderly" would be Section J.
Thank you for that clarification. So, we're going to, and there was a question from Councilman Conway.
Just a quick question to clarify from my own forgetting. What is 60% AMI again? Do you guys remember roughly?
It's a scale.
Councilman Dorsey.
It's a, it's a, it's a scale that...
No, no, no. What is the range for 60, what is the amount for 60% AMI? My question particularly ties to those folks' ability to purchase a vehicle, to even have a parking spot that would then be required without this bill. So, I...
Right. The AMI for 60%, or above, is close to $58,000.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
For the whole, for the whole household. So, that's a household income.
Right. And I guess I asked that question particularly because for a whole household, more than one person, to be bringing in less than $60,000 and be able to afford a car. So, just ask that question because I think it helps me understand how useful a parking spot would be to a family like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion? So, we're going to get this amendment rewritten and ready for, before the next council meeting on Monday, but we're going to go ahead and vote for it now. Is there a motion to recommend the amendment favorable?
I, yes.
So moved, from Conway and seconded by Dorsey. Chair Middleton is a yes. Bullock is a yes. Conway is a yes. Dorsey is a yes. Ramos is a yes. And Stokes?
I have to recuse myself. I'm a board member of Parking Authority, so I recuse.
Yes. Obstain. Okay. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorable as amended? With so moved by Dorsey, seconded by Conway, Middleton, yes. Bullock, yes. Conway, yes. Dorsey is a yes. Ramos?
May I explain my vote? Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify, what we did for the inclusionary bill was to do the tax credit so that, because the cost of that rent over time is going to be more than, you know, what dealing with the parking would have been, what this bill does in complement with that is to make sure that the project costs are down so that the subsidy ends up being down. Okay? And you heard from a couple of our, the developers here, that, I mean, they do provide parking. It's based on what the market will bear. We're not saying that, and nobody is saying that there won't be any parking, right? It's just based on what the market will bear. So, I vote yes, and I appreciate the opportunity and the discussion with the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And Stokes?
Again, I abstain as a member of the, board member of Parking Authority.
And Stokes is abstaining. Point well taken. Thank you. This bill will move on to second reader at the next council meeting. Next, the committee will hear the last bill, Bill Number 24-0494, Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Overlay Zoning District, Prohibited Uses. For the purpose of amending certain prohibited uses within the Chesapeake Bay Critical Area Overlay Zoning District, defining certain terms and establishing a special effective Sponsor Costello. This bill was introduced on February 26, 2024, and will now hear committee agency reports on this first. The city solicitor's office?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Lena DePietra for the city solicitor's office. And the Law Department does approve this bill for form of legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Finance?
The Finance Department does not think that this will have any fiscal impact.
Thank you. Housing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Wright for DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. The Housing Authority?
Housing Authority stands by their bill report.
Thank you. And the Office of Homeless Services?
They also stand by their bill report.
Thank you. Committee members have any comments or questions? Checking for in-person testimony, and we have one. Michael Padone?
Padone. Madam Chair, members of the committee, Michael Padone for the National Aquarium. I'm here today in support of Council Bill 240494. Although this bill is at the request of the National Aquarium, it will benefit businesses across Baltimore's waterfront communities from Canton around to Locust Point. And while it's not specific to any particular downtown development project, in the short term, it will solve a problem for the National Aquarium. Problem I'll briefly explain. So, the aquarium is building a floating wetlands project, which will incorporate things like native grasses that will remove nutrients from the water, a learning platform that will serve as a waterfront classroom, and walkways for visitors that will provide a park-like experience in the inner harbor. It will serve as an important commercial draw for tourists. From a legal standpoint, this structure is considered a pier. And in the critical area, state law generally allows people to build water-dependent things like piers. But based on visitor feedback, the aquarium determined that there's one amenity that visitors want, and that is shade. So, the aquarium proposed putting some modest shade canopies on the floating wetlands, but under state law, shade canopies are considered non-water-dependent structures that generally cannot be built on piers in a critical area. There is an important exception in state law, though, that would allow a structure like these shade canopies to be built. But that exception is only available if the local jurisdiction has opted into the exception through an amendment to its zoning code. Ten Maryland counties have already opted into this exception, but the city has not. And that's the problem we encountered with the aquarium shade canopies. We talked to both city and state regulators. Everyone wanted to approve the canopies, but they couldn't because the city hadn't yet opted into the exception. So, this bill is a first and critical step to solving this problem. By amending the zoning code as provided in this bill, the city council would be paving the way for non-water-dependent structures on piers. But, and I want to be really clear about this, only if those non-water-dependent structures comply with the rigorous environmental guardrails that are in state law. This bill does not create some kind of exception or loophole from compliance with environmental laws. After this bill is adopted, the state's Critical Area Commission will need to approve the city's opt-in for it to be effective. The Critical Area Commission, the city's Planning Department, other key stakeholders have all been consulted throughout this process, and I am highly confident that the Critical Area Commission will find this bill to be satisfactory. So, for these reasons, I respectfully request a favorable report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your testimony.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just want to correct the record. HABC was not referred this bill. So, it's the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, Planning Commission, as well as the Office of Sustainability that also need to provide their reports.
Okay.
And I'll just go ahead and start with OECD, because Director Moore is not present, but they do stand by their favorable bill report.
Thank you. If they could just submit something in writing before, you know, that they support the bill...
Who? OECD?
You said something about the committees, I mean, the agencies that weren't...
Yeah, so you called out HABC, and it didn't dawn on me that they aren't referred this bill, so they didn't submit a report.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's no report for them.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Ava Richardson, Sustainability Director with the city's Office of Sustainability. So, just wanted to put on the record, we stand by our report as it aligns with the goals in our disaster preparedness and planning project, and I want to make sure we get the Planning Commission in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon. Grace Hansen, on behalf of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission considered City Council Bill 240494 on March 7, 2024, and the commission recommends that the council bill be approved by city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. Is there any other agency that, yes, Transportation?
Good afternoon. James Turner, Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report and no objection.
Thank you. We're trying to get out of here. Sorry about that. Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Micah Fetz, representing the Baltimore Development Corporation. The BDC stands by its report, and the report is favorable.
Thank you. Any questions to the agencies thus far? And so, we did have, did we have an amendment on this one? No amendment on this one. Is there a motion to move this bill?
So moved.
So moved by Stokes and seconded by Bullock. Middleton, yes. Bullock is a yes. Conway, yes. Dorsey is a yes. Ramos is a yes. And Stokes is a yes. And this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.